I'm unable to get Representative St. Clair under order.
Those are consent in action, so we've approved them in the past.
Oh, that's all right.
Okay?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for November 26, 2018 at this hour. As always, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Henry Lippman in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, we'll note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowens. Counselor Lippman?
Counselor Bowens, I'm sorry, is not here this evening.
Counselor Lippman?
Present.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Angler?
We'll go with present tonight. We've got to call for the third alternative, I think, to make this more interesting.
Yo.
Yo.
Presence is an honor of...
All right, that's a great idea. So why don't you be bold enough next time?
You know it.
I'll throw in a second yo for the...
Okay, good. Also note for the record, oh, I should note that five councils are present tonight. Madam Secretary, so a quorum for this meeting is present. This council is also joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers. Our first order of regular business is to take care of minutes from the last meeting, which was November 13. Those minutes were distributed the following day, November 14, to the council. As of this time, no corrections have been submitted to the clerk, and so unless there are any at this hour, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting on November 13 to be approved as submitted by the clerk. Consent in action calendar, we have two items tonight relative to Motorcycle Week. The first one, item A, is a request for approval of a hill climb on Tower Street to be held on Tuesday, June 11, 2019, from 10:30 in the morning to 1:30 in the afternoon in connection with Laconia Motorcycle Week. This is a repeat event, same rules and regulations from last year. Any questions before we get to a motion? All right, a motion in order to approve the request for approval of a hill climb on Tower Street to be held Tuesday, June 11, 2019, from 10:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. in connection with the Laconia Motorcycle Week 2019, pending approval by the Special Events Review Committee, which will take care of the details. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Also on that front is a request from Laconia Motorcycle Week Association to waive fees as usual for a bike show and swap meet to be held in Opechii Park on Friday, June 14, 2019. Again, this is a traditional event during Motorcycle Week. Counselor Lippman, would you care to make that motion?
I would, especially since the proceeds are donated to the Laconia Motorcycle Week budget.
All right, Counselor Lippman moves to approve a request from Motorcycle Week Association to waive fees for a bike show and swap meet to be held on Friday, June 14, 2019, at Opechii Park, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., pending approval by the Parks and Recreation Commission, with all proceeds for the event going to the city of Laconia's Motorcycle Week budget. Seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Also, on to citizen comments. This is the appropriate time for anyone who's with us tonight and wishes to address the council to come forward on any subject that is not on tonight's agenda, not on tonight's agenda. Anyone care to take advantage of that? Nope, all right. We have no interviews, no nominations, appointments, elections, no public hearings. Mayor's report. One thing quickly on the Colonial Theater front. I updated the council at our last meeting, to some extent, on the status of the Colonial Theater project, and I had indicated at that time that it was my hope that Counselor Hamel and I would be able to come to the full council with a report on the proceedings of the last several months with a recommendation for action either at this meeting or at our first meeting in December. And I need to update you that that is not going to happen and why. And this might even be news to Counselor Hamel because he wasn't at the last meeting we had a week ago, so it was, it was, there was a new development at that meeting that's not alarming in any way, but prudent, I think, and that is, in the discussion at that last meeting, it was determined that too much of our budget, if you will, for funding the project and the expenses incurred by same, depend on the appraisal of the theater building itself, to leave that to chance. And so the group decided unanimously that we were going to pause at this point in time and have a request that an appraisal of the building be done now rather than later. You will recall that the theater is on the books, as far as the city is concerned, at an assessed value of around $900,000. You will also recall that the sale price three years ago was $1.4 million, that Bell Nap Economic Development Council paid to the owner of the building for that property, and that the city, we loaned BEDC $1.4 million to complete that transaction. And so there, at the very least, we realistically need that building to appraise at this point in time for $1.4 million. But there's also the hope on the part of the committee that's been working and has been for some time that the building would appraise for more than that. And it's complicated as to why, but the oversimplified explanation for why is because if the building will appraise for more than $1.4 million at present, then the corporation, which is an LLC that was set up by BEDC, could sell the building as a technicality to another LLC for the new appraised price, and the difference, the spread between those two numbers, could go into the project to attract more new market tax dollars. Because the higher, the higher the amount of money that's in the pot, so to speak, for the redevelopment project, the more tax credits we, investment we are able to attract because of that. So, and there have been various numbers tossed around in different budgets as to what that number ought to be or could be, but there's also skepticism, since that building is on the books for the city, for $900,000, that it can appraise for as much as 1.4, let alone more than that. And so we, to be cautious and not have to come back to the council again two months from now and say, oh, it's changed again, we got, you know, the appraisal came in and we're scrambling again to figure out what to do, we don't want to do that, I don't want to do that, Counselor Hamel doesn't want to do that. So we just thought that the prudent thing to do at this point in time was to, was to ask, now the appraisal, ask for an appraisal. The appraisal would have to be ordered by Mascoma Bank, the community development entity that, we would end up paying for it, but it would be, they would be the entity that would actually order it being done, and we would pay for it. And that could probably take, I'm told, 60 days or so to do that appraisal. So, so that's where we are right now. So we're sort of in a timeout. That doesn't mean we've stopped, there's all kinds of detailed work that we can proceed on in the meantime, but until we know what that building is actually going to appraise for and what effect that has on the overall budget and funding stack for the project, I think it's best to take the time to do it now and find out. So I'd be happy to ask her any questions. I'll keep you all posted, as Counselor Hamel will, on this issue as we go along, but that's where we stand as of today.
Mr. Mayor, so the request for a new appraisal has already been made?
The, well, this meeting was held, when was it, Counselor?
Last Wednesday, I believe.
Last Tuesday or Wednesday, I guess it was, yes. And, no, it was Monday, I'm sorry, Monday of last week, we had this, it was a special meeting, Monday of last week. And Jack Dugan, our consultant from Keen, from Adenok Economic Development Corporation, was to call Mascoma the next day and ask them to start the appraisal project. I've not heard anything good or bad as far, and probably with the Thanksgiving holiday and everything, who knows whether that conversation has been had, but the committee is having its next meeting on Wednesday morning of this week, so we'll get an update at that point in time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions I can answer at this point in time for anybody? No? Okay, committee reports. I know Land and Buildings had a meeting earlier tonight. Counselor Hamel, do you want to report on that meeting?
I will, thank you, Mayor. We had a meeting about the parking garage. Pat Wood, who is the chairman of the Downtown Tiff Committee, came before us and asked basically, you know, what the council's thoughts are on the parking garage, you know, what process do we want to do or path to follow on it. And I suggested that we ask DuBois and King, this here was a booklet that they made, it's pretty complete, about everything to do with the parking garage, the structure, what's failing on the structure and all that, and we've had repairs on the ramps, temporary repairs on the first ramp, none on the second ramp. The, evidently the ceilings are still leaking on that, so I asked that we have an update on the cost, whether it's DuBois and King, which I imagine those would be the ones to do this, Scott?
More than likely, we'd have the same person, just review it and update it for today's dollars.
Yeah, so, you know, to ask what it would be to redo the first floor decking and, I don't know, possibly replace some of the beams that are there that are corroding. So anyway, it's, I think we should wait until we get those prices on that. We did have a full blown-out price to do everything, and it was probably somewhere between $3.5 and $4 million roughly. That would include that outside elevator, outside staircase, and that they're updating all electrical and...
Good thing Counselor Bowens isn't here tonight.
I know. Well, we brought up about his idea of the parking garage in the, in the City Hall parking lot, also, you know, as an alternative. So it's kind of, if we can get the pricing, it's, you know, which direction does the council want to go with this, you know? But also Scott brought up, you know, to ease on the parking, it would be to have angled parking on part of Beacon East and Beacon West and having one of the travel lanes not used because of that. So he's going to have Public Works, I believe, look into it and come back with somewhat of a cost and the feasibility of it, and as Scott said...
Gain some spaces on Beacon Street.
Gain more spaces, and if you do most of Beacon East and part of Beacon West, there's a lot of spaces there that you could put in there. So we're going to, we can look at that also for, to gain, to gain time on the different things. So that's about where we are on that right now. There's any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Cheney.
I sat in the back while this was being discussed and heard, actually from more than one person, the concerns about the rush hour traffic and whatever that sort of bottles up down here at the, at the south end. I'm not so sure I would be concerned about going north on Beacon East, but Beacon West can get pretty busy several times during the day. I know in the mornings when I used to commute, it could get pretty busy. I sometimes do a couple of light cycles before I could get through. The reason I bring all of that up, I frankly favor the idea, at least conceptually.
Right.
But I do think we ought to spend a little bit of time and effort, whether that's with Public Works or whoever, but someone looking at it and sort of getting a thought about what the impact, if we close down those lanes, what will the impact be on that commuter traffic?
We could ask them to do that. I think Beacon East would be fairly safe to do that. I mean, I don't ever remember any traffic backed up on Beacon East, the majority of cars go straight through main streets, trucks, everything, just go through there. Beacon West, I kind of agree with you, that's probably more heavily used for the industrial park let out and all that kind of stuff, so we can take a look, but I think, too, it would help slow down the traffic some, too. There's other ways of doing that also.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, my own observation as a relatively frequent traveler, that not as much anymore, for years, my office was on Water Street, so I dealt with that street all the time on a daily basis, but not so much anymore, but that's a funky, if I may use that word, design, because the, I'm talking about Beacon Street West now, not, not east, but the concern you're talking about, because that is a state highway, and clearly at times, the people who were trying to use that road as a state highway, especially when the, when the plants let out at O'Shea, shift change time and whatnot, can really back up there. But you've got, so you've got two lanes of Speedway really coming around the corner there where the bank is, and then heading downhill at rapid rate of speed, not unusual at all. But there's, there are no real clear markings on that street once you, once it funnels down. It's sort of every man for himself, it's like Boston there for a while, where it is no clear delineation as to what lane you're supposed to be in to go where, and it's just sort of funnels in, and so I guess what I'm saying is, is that, yes, there are two lanes swinging around in that Speedway area there, but in effect, it's one lane, because when you get to the bottom of the hill there where the pedestrian crossing is and pass that, it's, it's one lane. I mean, you, you, there's, 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 and it's not clearly defined. I mean, you know by experience kind of where you're supposed to be, but it isn't clearly defined there. Assuming you want to go straight off onto South Main Street, it's not real clear as to where you should be at that point in time. If you want to turn left and come back up either Main Street or Beacon Street East, then, and I would suggest that that's a tiny minority of the traffic that comes around that corner is making that turn, then it's pretty, you know, you hug the left-hand side and you make that turn to the left, but that's, you know, I'm guessing that that's a very small minority of the cars. That the vast majority of the cars are either going to go straight or, or turn right up at the lights and whatnot onto Court Street. And so the, most of the cars at that bottleneck there right by the river, in my experience, are in one lane anyway. It's very difficult. It's not like there's two lanes of through traffic, and we would be narrowing down two lanes to one lane. There really is only one lane of through traffic.
But there's still the one-lane right-turn traffic, which can get large at rush hour.
So anyway, I don't have a set opinion on it, other than to say that it, I don't think the backup would be, I'm guessing that the backup would not be much worse than it is today because there's a natural narrowing, funneling there of that traffic anyway, right now.
And if that's what we find, I, but I think we ought to at least look at it.
Yeah.
That's all I was trying to...
You know, probably what could happen is the parallel parking on the west side of Beacon West could be taken out, and then the angled parking could be on the bank side. You know, then you'd still have the two lanes...
Yep.
...on that outside part. But something that maybe Public Works could look at and help us out with.
Yep.
So, okay. Is there any other questions?
I would love to see traffic slow down on that whole street there. I mean, it is, it is...
Enforcement might help.
So one of the things that I, that struck me just as an observer of your meeting, along with Counselor Cheney, is that, that... Is the, is the observation that Mr. Wood made at the very beginning of his presentation, I can't remember his exact words, but, you know, he said something akin to parking, downtown parking is a problem. And, and, you know, dispute would be too big, too strong a word to describe that, but I question that as to whether or not that's a fact or not. You know, I have, I think somebody mentioned Pleasant Street during that presentation, and, and I have, I have never once driven down Pleasant Street without being able to find a parking space that I can recall ever. And that's usually because, because of where I live and the way I come into downtown, typically, that's usually the route I take into downtown, and I've just, I've never driven past Pleasant Street because I couldn't find a place to park on Pleasant Street. Maybe I'm just lucky and I, there at a certain time of day or whatever, I don't know. I would say, however, that certainly, you know, the adding of, of, a lot of employees, I don't know what the exact number is, with the redevelopment of the building across the street over here by what was Genesis Behavioral Health, has certainly added to the demand for parking spaces in our parking lot out here. I've been shocked on a few occasions to see how early in the morning that parking lot, the all-day parking part of that parking lot is, is full. And if you sit there for any minute and watch the people arrive and where they're going, they're going across the street to, to, you know, and I, several of us, as you know, are involved with the, on the zoning master plan task force and whatnot. We just had our first meeting of the new era, so to speak, of that. Counselor Lippman and I were at that meeting, Counselor Bowens the other night, and the first thing we're going to be doing on that committee, that task force, is going to be focusing on zoning in the downtown area. And I think part of that effort is going to be to relook at this concept we've had for decades here of the so-called downtown overlay parking district. I don't think anyone approaches that conversation with, with a preconceived notion necessarily, but, but, you know, the fact is that, that it's the only place in the city where you can, you can start a business, large or small, or replace a business, and don't have to answer for parking. You can't do that anywhere else. You can't just walk in and say, I've got 100 employees, and it's somebody else's problem where they're going to park. Except in downtown, where, and a lot of the parking spaces, as I think the city manager mentioned, a lot of the parking spaces that count toward the total that's supposed to be good for everybody that allows this concept to work are in parking spaces no one's ever going to use because they're too far away, or they're judged to be too far away. You know, but they count. So if, you know, if I say I want to buy building X down here and I've got 100 employees, and I don't need to worry about parking, it's your job to provide the parking, those spaces in all those, in those remote areas count toward that total that give me that kind of leeway, but yet nobody uses them. Now, the demand is on the ones that are within easy walking distance, you know, 100 yards of wherever it is they're going, and if not more so. So I think we're going to need to take a look at that whole concept to see whether it needs some fine tuning or whatnot, or the area needs fine tuning in terms of what counts in the so-called downtown overlay parking, the parking area. And, you know, that brings up the, we know, we know that we own the second and third floors of the parking garage. That's a city property, it's a city asset and whatnot, but, and we own a lot out here. But beyond that, you know, one thing I'm waiting to hear, Counselor, is, is, you know, where's the responsibility here for the people who own property downtown?
No disagree?
You know, I mean, the last major parking, and some of you may correct me here if I'm wrong on this, but I think the last major addition of parking downtown as a project was the so-called Main Street parking lot, the parking lot that loops between Pleasant Street and Main Street, and that was a joint venture between the landowners and the property owners downtown and the city. It was not bought and paid for 100 cents on the dollar by the city. It was a joint project that, that the owners of the buildings downtown helped pay for. And I think that's not a bad concept, so I'm just throwing something else out here that this, to me, this strictly isn't just a public responsibility in terms of, we certainly don't look at it as such anywhere else. You know, I, my business is on Upper Union Avenue, and I guarantee you, if I have a parking problem, I'm not coming to the city manager and saying, you need to provide me with more parking. You know, it isn't going to happen, it's going to be my responsibility, is what any of you, this is hope. Anyway, it was interesting, and thanks for the update.
Okay.
But I think there's lots of angles to this.
There is, there is, and also Pat brought up about the St. Joseph's property, you know, whether the city would be interested in that or not. So I guess the city manager has a meeting with Father Mark sometime this week or next week?
Next week.
Next week. So just in the early stage...
You're actually talking to him about the city buying that complex?
Just gathering information so I can present it to the mayor and council.
See, we have a reporter here tonight, so we've got to be accurate here on what we're, what we're suggesting. I mean, I didn't understand that part of it. It was, it was the concept there that by getting, how is that gaining parking? If this building...
Well, I guess there's, there's a potential buyer, from what Pat said, don't know, that would have much, a lot less use of the parking lot. I don't know, that's news to me, so...
Oh, okay. So we wouldn't have the city employees taking up parking spaces here?
Correct.
That's what you're thinking? Because it would be a low, low intense use of this building?
Whatever that would be. So anyway, so where we're at is the gathering of information by the, by Public Works Department, and Scott will do something with DuBois on an update or, okay. So that's where we're at right now, and when we get that information, we'll rediscuss it.
Okay. Any other questions for Counselor Hamel? Any other committee business? How about liaisons on reports? Any liaisons on reports tonight? No? All right. Citizens' request to current on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time for anyone who's with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda. Representative St. Clair, is he wearing a tie? I can't tell.
Nice tie.
Nice tie.
Thank you, thank you. I just, this, since you've gotten into the parking garage, and the street stuff came up, and I've heard some remarks about speeding vehicles, I would like to remind the council, and perhaps you could reach out to former chief of police Mike Moyer, that at one time we heard these similar complaints, right here in this room, and this police department put out speed cameras or monitors, and they registered the speed of all the vehicles going down, both Beacon Street East and West, and I'm pretty sure East, too. And the report was, because I paid attention to this, was that most vehicles were going 25... twenty-five to twenty miles an hour. Now, I'm aware of the fact that when you're standing still, especially if you're waiting across the street and somebody goes by at twenty-five miles an hour or thirty, which is the speed limit, they're gonna seem like they're going very fast. But I personally disagree that that is a speedway out there. And I, and with all due respect to the mayor, I, I understand what you're saying about the, the one lane thing there, but the reality is, is that there are three lanes once you cross the bridge, a left turn, straight and a right turn. And when you take away, again, my opinion, but since nobody's gonna talk to me when these groups get together and talk, uh, when you, if you, if you do that one lane there from where Sawyer's is, I guess, back, um, you're gonna back traffic up to Veteran Square. I, I contend when the industrial park gets out. And again, with all due respect to people's parking or pulling out of parking lots, uh, parking spaces ability, uh, backing out of a, an angled parking into one lane of traffic can be a challenge for people. And, um, I consider myself to be a pretty good driver and when I'm on Main Street and I, and angled parking, rather than wrench my neck and try to look through vehicles, I tend to look at the reflection in the storefronts. That's my way of doing it and I can see if somebody's coming so I can start to inch my way out. There are no storefronts on either one of these streets here to help with that. So I, I just think that, I know you're gonna look at all the things here, so I, I was hoping there'll be a public hearing, uh, when all this stuff is brought to task. And that's, I know it's a big challenge and I get that, but I couldn't resist responding to, since it was on the agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're to the city manager's board, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm gonna take the liberty of just maybe responding there since, as you pointed out, we have a reporter here tonight and we just wanna get the accurate information out there. But, um, Conquer just did a major downtown revitalization with angled parking up and down the whole main corridor, Main Street there and very successful. And I don't think people down there have, generally have issues doing the angled parking and backing out into one lane of traffic, which is where they're at now. Additionally, on the Beacon West side, there's only parking right now up to and probably not right to Water Street, probably a few spaces back from Water Street. So we would not be extending parking any further than it goes right now. And from Water Street now, you would have three lanes of traffic to go right, straight and left in front of Sawyer's. So that same queuing that exists now, none of that from Water Street below would be taken up with parking. So I think the concern about traffic being backed up for Veteran Square because we're gonna take it all for parking, we'll certainly look at it, we'll certainly present the information, but I just wanted to be clear that those three queuing lanes will all still be available if we tried something different with parking up until Water Street. So, um, just put that out there. A couple of quick items that are, um, not in your, uh, reports in the packet, then I'll get to those. I did share with the council, as you had asked me to do, on doing some administrative approval that you didn't feel needed to get onto city council agendas. On July fourth, I've allowed approval of fireworks to go later for a wedding, uh, at the Margate. That's a Thursday night typically fireworks would be done at nine o'clock by ordinance on a weeknight. I figured it's the Fourth of July, we're gonna be hearing fireworks probably till two in the morning from everybody in, in and around the lakes, but this would be fireworks to no later than ten-thirty, um, at the Margate for that. So sharing, I've already shared that with you, but I just wanted to share it at a meeting. There was a swearing in ceremony that I know several of the city councils attended today for Chief Biati to be formally sworn in. That was a very nice ceremony and, uh, thank you, counselors who were able to attend that. One item that I'm sure Representative St. Clair might speak to that's not on your agenda nor is it intended to come on your agenda in the future, but it was approved by the Parks Commission, was an item to be shooting some fireworks off on barges and kind of a, uh, dueling competitions of fireworks on the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend and using just one small part of the parking lot at the, uh, at Endicott Rock Park and putting a canopy type of tent up, uh, on the beach near the canal. Since it didn't involve any fundraising, didn't involve alcohol, didn't involve any of the things that brings it to the threshold where it would come to city council approval, Parks Commission has reviewed it, has approved it, subject to special events review, appropriate indemnification for insurance for the city, those types of things. But I just wanted to kinda land it on your radar. You know, barges on the lake for shooting fireworks, fireworks are under state control, so the permitting will be done at the appropriate places, but there's not a reason per our guidelines to bring it to the city council, but I just wanted to share that with you as well. For the two reports in your packet, we have the monthly economic development report that begins on page fourteen of your agenda. Again, unemployment well below three percent in the city, in the region, in the state. Nancy Brown, my assistant, did reach out to the state because we were looking for updates on the employment wages, which at this point go back to the fourth quarter of two thousand seventeen. And we were checking with Employment Security to see if there was something more updated than that, that wasn't on their website that was available. And the answer is they're having some challenges in compiling that information and they don't have any more recent data than what you see right there. So when we get newer data, we'll put that there for you. CPI for October came in at two and a half percent, so for ten months out of the year, we're trending a little bit over two and a half percent. Unless something significant happens strongly to the upside or to the downside for inflation for November and December, we're probably gonna end up with a CPI of either two point four, two point five would be my, what my crystal ball is saying. We have seen a softening in some, the oil markets right now and gasoline prices, so that might bode for inflation dropping a little bit, uh, at least for where we are in November right now. But all indications are, we'll be in that two point four, two point five percent for one of the components that we use in our tax cap calculation. On the projects update, um, as you're all aware, this has not been the best of falls weather-wise for doing a lot of our construction and street projects. It seems that every third day we've got rain. We do have Court Street for maybe some punchless things in the sidewalk, but basically a coat of asphalt on, drainage connected to handle major issues there for the winter, so we're good to go on Court Street. We'll be back there in this, in the spring as weather allows for five more weeks in the road and then some additional work on sidewalks and off of the road. But as soon as weather allows in the spring, that's first priority. Staff over the winter months is working on the final timeline for the Union Ave project right out here, starting at Main Street up to Guilford Avenue. So we'll be having some finalized details coming out probably in, uh, February to the timeline there. We'll also be spending some staff time and engineering time looking at the upgrades that we funded for the trafficked crosswalks, the signalized crosswalks at some of our major intersections where we're, we're gonna be doing the chirping and the flashing and some of the more modern choices. So that'll be worked on through the winter for implementation in the various, um, intersections come springtime. Probably the last, uh, piece of construction that'll be occurring is on the River Walk down here behind the Benny Media Building and the spa, uh, is where the, uh, the last component of that part of the River Walk, the bridge will be dropped in place. It was built on, off-site, off to the side somewhere and it'll be coming in with a crane and dropping that new bridge in place. And I believe that's slated to take place somewhere toward the end of this week. So, um, that is, uh, still happening. Couple of the projects, including the, uh, the softball irrigation, again with the early onset of winter and snow. We've got the bid awarded to that, to Guilford Well to do that. That'll be a priority first thing in the spring, so we'll have that ready to go. But just again, um, not a great, um, weather season on a number of fronts. We've, uh, approached some of the brush along Opichi Cove and looking for, not that I'm encouraging winter to get here, but when ice freezes over, we'll get into Pearlie Pond a little bit more as well and do some more at Opichi Cove, um, to do some of the maintenance there. So I'm happy to take any questions on that or anything else anyone may have.
Questions or comments for the manager, Counselor Lippman?
I saw we made progress on the, uh, making it easier to cross near Vista Foods and, um, I'm just looking to get refreshed just because of, uh, constituent inquiry in terms of the other major crosswalks that we were looking at doing. The one, uh, leading from like the tavern building across the street over towards the library and a couple others, where those fit in terms of our planning? And I'm trying to recall whether we had those in the budget for coming year.
That's some of the dollars for working on those signals, either with the chirps or the flashing and the countdowns and stuff. So we'll be working with an engineering team to design those upgrades through this winter and look to be installing them, not only at Main Street. We talked about doing most of the, the intersection, so, uh, look for that construction-wise to happen sometime in the spring.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, I have a few questions, Scott. I was wondering if we could, if, if the council could get a report on the cost of what it's been, what the cost is of Court Street up to now? What we've expended, uh, we've made available through that bond a substantial amount of money and I'm just wondering where we are on the expenditure of that? If we're on track to keep it in line with the budget? You know, and that there? Also, I know there was a lot of delays and, you know, delays with communications and that kinda stuff, uh, but I think the intent was that this fall at the base level paving was supposed to be done, the granite for the sidewalks and, and the sidewalks were gonna be done. And like I said, I know there was a lot of rain delays and things like that, but you, you seemed to have had a lot of trouble getting the communications part of that out of the ground. So i- is that done now?
I think they've pulled everything out and they've done the final splicing as of last week, though. So it was consolidated communications, just to be specific. We worked with, uh, not only city departments, including, you know, water and sewer and in Public Works, obviously there, we worked with Liberty Gas and Eversource and.
Fire alarm.
Fire alarm wires and the cable wires and everybody was at the table last December and knew the timeline, we're all involved in, in the project. And, um, even with some of the weather delays, we were in a position where we turned over the final piece to, um, Consolidated Communication, the new name for Fairpoint, um, back in the middle of September with what they had indicated was gonna be a couple of week project. And after delays and runaround and not being able to get through to people, um, finding a little, little bit of a fire in them, under them, got to some right people and indicated that, oh, we're not sure whoever told you two to three weeks, this should have been a ninety-day, uh, project and, um. Whoops, kind of thing. I don't know if you noticed on some of the nights and weekends, but after we had that conversation with them, they were literally out there nights and weekends and moving along because I basically said to them, every hour you save on this project allows us to start tying some of the, the storm drains together and getting more work done for every available construction day this season. We've made some new contacts there. We will now have different people sitting at the table when we start talking about some comprehensive projects, including, uh, the, the, the bridge on Court Street, which will be coming up in the next year, eighteen months, over that bridge replacement and how they roll in and with some other ones. So, um, we certainly got their attention all the way up the national level. But it didn't help solve our problem for them slowing us up, um, this winter, this fall.
Yeah, so I, I guess my question is, uh, if that, if they didn't slow us up, would we, would we have had our base coat down and, um, granite sidewalks in?
I can't tell you that the sidewalks would be complete, but I would say that we would have the base coat down. Part of it was there was an old duct that if you run down there, that was causing some of the collapsing, they had a communications duct that was failing in the middle of the road and they needed to pull the wire out on the Belmont end and get it run overhead and then individually splice each customer in. And until they got everybody spliced, they basically couldn't abandon, uh, that duct work in there because it was still live and servicing the customers, um, for them. So it, it wasn't an opportunity for us to be in there. And, and that was the inbound lane that it was in, coming in, so it was just, it held us up and it even held us up to the point of trying to, uh, cross-connect storm drains from both sides of the street because you had this duct work that, you know, we weren't able to get under or over with the, with where it was situated in the ground. So, um, it was a significant challenge, um, and, and trust me, we, we have their attention now.
Yeah. Well, what I was wondering is, uh, where we had to put down a base coat for the winter and I believe I heard that base coat's gotta be ground up to, to continue, uh, working there?
So one of the things that we would have to do is because the quality of the material in that roadbed was very poor, we were gonna be pulling material out and bringing in some bank gravel to go in and build that up so that when we put the asphalt on this and it being a main artery, uh, with a lot of traffic, including truck traffic, we wanna build it right where it's gonna last us fifteen, twenty years, not, you know, six, seven years we're seeing rutting or we're back in there again and people are saying, you know, what happened? So a couple of things, we were gonna put the gravel in, but by now, we're gonna be working with our consultant, Turner Group out of Dover. And by grinding this up and we have to get back there and start digging, we're comfortable that at least that's gonna buy us some value with not having to bring in as much gravel at all to go ahead and get it to the spec that we want. So yes, we paid to put it down, there's gonna be some value, it's not gonna be completely lost by us grinding it up in the spring, that'll be, uh, we'll be able to use that in lieu of some of the gravel. And the second, and the second thing is when we finish that project up, we're gonna be doing two, two-inch layers and a final one-inch layer on top. So we're doing a five-inch asphalt on that, which is gonna give us the, the timeframe that a road construction project like that should buy us.
Like, I guess my comment would be that, uh, since they delayed us for six weeks and we had to put a temporary base coat down at a cost to the city, uh, maybe they should have a letter saying that, you know, we would appreciate partial payment for.
That is on our radar.
On your lack of, uh, completing the job in a timely manner so we could get out of there before winter.
We've had those discussions internally and we'll be broaching that subject with them.
Okay. The other question, uh, I have for six month, six weeks to two months, I've been asking about repairs at the intersection of Court and Main. There's a section there that's full of potholes, they're getting bigger. No attempt has been made, from what I can see, to fill those. People are trying to go around them every which way they can and there's beginning to more, there's beginning to be more potholes in that intersection that's starting. And, uh, like I said, it's been, you know, six, four to six weeks anyway, that I've asked for something to be done there.
Are we still expecting them to come in? So Consolidated is coming in, weather-dependent with hot mix, not just cold patch, and doing potholes beyond the construction area, work zone that have been paved on Court Street and coming in and doing that exact area that you've identified in that intersection.
Okay.
And with hot pat, with hot patch, not cold, you know, hot mix, not cold patch.
Okay. Hopefully I'll have better luck, uh, getting them to fill those holes than, uh, that, the other part there. The other thing is, busy corner lights. Those lights still are not working right. People get, especially on Church Street, it skips. It'll be green on Union Avenue and then it might turn, it'll turn red, then let Winter Street off and then instead of switching over to Church Street, it lets Union Avenue go again. It skips cycles and you sit on Church Street forever. You know, cars are going through red lights, I've seen it happen several times, you know, they're gonna eventually be passing each other to get out of the intersection because they don't, do not work.
We can check out the camera on that, I've not heard, I've heard an occasional one here and there, but I've not heard it be a significant.
I think Charlie would probably have a comment on that because he got stuck there too.
We can definitely check out how the camera's operating there on that leg.
Okay, 'cause I brought it up before several times because they, they do not cycle properly. You're just gonna sit there. If there's a car coming from Lakeport Square, the light's gonna stay green till that car gets here. It, it just does not work.
Okay. We, what we tried to do, and maybe it needs some tweaking still, is to coordinate that the, the two traffic lights at Busy Corner and at Guilford Ave coordinate with each other so that you're not getting always a green light to get through and then all of a sudden, you're back on the break. So to the ability that they can during peak times, we've got morning rush, afternoon rush that we try to consolidate, they're not always gonna coordinate with each other depending on how they're programmed, but we can take a look at that. But I had not heard from you that the, the Church Street was skipping, so I would definitely, we can take a look at that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anything for the manager?
If I might. Just, you and I spoke earlier this, I guess, late, late last week, uh, about the historical, the historical markers in the weirs, that's for the, our next meeting?
That, that's already on the agenda, we've got some schematics. This is dealing with the Weirs Action Committee, looking to put up some, uh, double-sided signs, but nice signs, a placard-type of signs with some historical facts about some of the, um, the uses in the weirs, whether it be the Mount Washington or some of the early airplane rides that, uh, the seaplanes took off, whether it was the Veterans Home, the rail coming in, early motorcycle week. So, uh, they're gonna be just requesting, we've got a template and a couple of examples of the type of narrative and photos they're looking to use on your agenda for December tenth, just to get approval. We're gonna installation, they'll be paying for them, installation will be done in conjunction with Public Works for making sure they're located, uh, in the right spots and installed properly. So that'll be December tenth agenda for you.
Okay. Counselor Lippman?
Any more update on our tax rate calculation?
We are struggling a little bit on a couple of new forms, um, with the, um, challenges we're having in the finance. I'm very hopeful we've, our auditors are assisting on this final form. In-house staff is really stepping up and, and pulling together. Uh, we're working with our representative at Department of Revenue, Michelle Clark, she certainly understands the situation. I am hopeful, our, our target is to, um, get the bills out by Friday because by getting them out by Friday. getting them out by Friday, has the due date be by December 31st as opposed to a January date. Doesn't impact the city on a cash flow, but it could potentially impact somebody on their personal income taxes if a, if an escrow company or something was holding money and chose not to pay it until a January date. So that is first and foremost on everyone's mind. And I'm hopeful that we might have a preliminary rate tomorrow afternoon, which would allow us to hit that cycle I'm talking about.
Okay. We're on to new business. We have one item of new business tonight, which is identified as Wake the Lake 2019 Block Party. And that is on page 21. The staff report starts on page 21 of your packet tonight. And we are being asked tonight to pass a motion that's outlined on page, at the bottom of page 21 there, including, does that include the temporary traffic order?
It's a temporary traffic order with conditions listed above at the bullet points from special events, police and fire approval, indemnification, to the extent required, the liquor commission to approve liquor on city street.
All right. So we're being asked to approve the temporary traffic order?
Yes, with, with the stipulations above as conditions.
That's on page 22. So this is basically Bike Timber Fest in May. Is that the short version?
That is the wonderful short version. Yes, exactly.
That's Gone with the Wind in one sentence, right?
You get a good template, you just roll it out. No need to reinvent the wheel again.
All right. So before we get to motions, Representative St. Clair is here tonight, I believe, to answer any questions anybody has about this. Does anybody have any questions? So this is an attempt at another shoulder season promotion? Is that what the bottom line is?
That is correct. And I just, I wasn't sure what the city manager mentioned about liquor enforcement. Again, they're, they're, all they will do is set the perimeters of licensees with regards where they can serve alcohol. The city gives the permission to have, to allow it to be served on the city street. And then they would set the perimeters for each licensee to say, okay, here's where your boundary ends or however.
So that is in your motion for the approval of alcohol on the city street. That's your extent. One of the bullet points says approval to the extent required from the New Hampshire Liquor Commission. So we left it kind of generic, but knowing that both this body's involved with the approval on the street, liquor commission, to the extent they are, is involved in determining where, who and where.
And I haven't seen what was finally written up, but I'm pretty sure there were some complaints last year from police that the road wasn't, the traffic wasn't stopped early enough in the day so that when they were putting the barricades up on Lakeside Avenue to get the detour to go around the backside, it wasn't done soon enough in their estimation. So that they had said if we were going to do this again this year coming, that we would actually block traffic there at 9:00 AM. I believe this past fall, it was at noon. And I, just so you know, I have spoken to both the fire chief and the chief of police to get their, that they were okay with this going forward. You can talk to them, of course. But I'm just, I want you to know that I have spoken to them.
And the only concern for many of butters we had pre-event last fall was from the Mount Washington. And that was just to make sure that if people were driving through or a tour bus came in to drop people off, that Tower Street was open for those vehicles to get out. And it is, and this will be the same thing here. And there were no logistics issues with the Mount Washington on any of their business.
Why was Mother's Day weekend picked?
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the same weekend as Cinco de Mayo. Hopefully the weather would be a little warmer a week later to boot and not to have it too close to Memorial Day weekend. So that was, that was the, that was the reason. And I guess I mentioned this thing, I mentioned that to Anthony. And Anthony's response was, they'll bring their mothers. So, which I thought was a good response, quite frankly, so.
Okay.
One time.
I have a procedural question about this for the city manager. And I noticed this earlier tonight on the, that may well be a good reason for this. But I noticed this tonight on the two items that we passed under a consent action, which were also motorcycle-related. When, when time is not of the essence, and these were being asked to approve these events seven months early, so to speak, or earlier than the event is being held, why are we, why is, why is stuff like this coming to the council before it has, it has gone through the other regulatory bodies and agencies?
I could speak to that a little bit and maybe there's a-
There's no rush to have this done.
I think in some cases, though, to get information into some of the trade publications for advertising this, that may only be quarterly. And you have to get your material in even prior to the quarterly publication, you could have some lead time. So in other words, by the time this got approved, or say it was tabled tonight and we didn't get it approved until December, you know, maybe the spring quarterly motorcycle trade magazine is already in the final stages and getting ready to print. I don't know. But I think the sooner it's approved, then they're able to start advertising and promoting it, especially because it is a new event that people haven't heard of before.
All right. So say I buy that. What, what does that have to do with the two items that were approved tonight?
You'll have to ask Representative St. Clair on those. Those are recurring. And I think he just thought they're on my, we should be careful. Usually we're chasing him down for information. So for the fact that we have it on the agenda early-
My question is, why are you asking the council to approve this stuff before the other committees that have to pass on this have had a chance to do so? There's no time rush on this, right?
Well, there's, the only time rush for me personally is that I'm on the road a lot starting in January for, and so I'm not always in town when we have a city council meeting. That's number one. And number two-
Jennifer's in town.
Pardon me?
Jennifer is in town.
Well, unless she's teaching on that night. But, but, but that being aside, the reality is, is that the city manager is right. The sooner we can get this stuff out there, the better. And I'm trying to think, and you'll have to bear with me on this, that I don't know that I went, I did go down, downstairs for, and I talked to Brandy about the hill climb. And we met with, you know, the fire chief and the police department, signed off on that, Public Works. But I don't, I don't recall, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that I went to an actual sit-down special events. I guess we did here.
You asked for two tonight. One has to yet be reviewed by the Special Events Review Committee.
Right. That would be the-
And one has to be approved by the Parks and Rec Commission.
That's been done.
That's been done.
That's been done. I went to Parks and Rec first on that.
Okay.
Sometimes I've not, sometimes it's been the other way around.
Here it says that's still needed.
No, that's been done. But I do recall a special events meeting because that's done during a day and I'm always thinking at night. So yeah, I did go before that. But again, again, this is just one, for me, one peg in the wheel. No matter which one I do first, I'm still going to have to go to the other one. So did I say something wrong?
No, no, no. I'm sorry.
Okay. No, I misspoke somehow.
Okay. Any other questions?
The time does march on quickly.
Anything before we get to a motion here?
Yes.
All right. A motion being ordered to approve temporary traffic order 2018-17, Wake the Lake 2019, pending the approval of the above conditions. A waiver of all licensing and special events fees to allow alcohol consumption on city property in the designated areas only, and to extend the hours of operation of sound equipment and/or loudspeakers from 10:00 PM to 11:00 PM for the duration of this year, of this event. Are you making the motion, Councilor?
I do.
Councilor Cheney makes the motion, seconded by, by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes confirm that motion carries. All right. Wake the Lake is on the books.
Happy Mother's Day.
Happy Mother, yeah. We're happy. I can see the T-shirts now. Okay. We have no unfinished business tonight. Council comments? Councilor Hamel?
Yes. This coming Thursday will be the start of the 43rd Christmas Village at the community center. And we, I would like to invite, and other members would like to invite the city council and the city manager and Public Works Director if you'd like to come, and whoever else for our opening at 6:00.
6:00.
6:00 on Thursday night. And we'll be presenting our key to our village to our mayor this year again.
I have quite a collection. Looking forward to adding to it.
You have quite a collection. You're going to get one more.
Does it open anymore?
So, so we'd love to have you come.
Going to have to have a will redraw and take care of what happens to all these keys upon my passing.
Okay. So we've been working hard to get it ready. And we've had a few drawbacks.
Who's the mayor this year?
Ah, wait, what, oh gosh.
Doesn't know.
Trying to think of his name. It skips my mind right now.
Sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot there.
You did. Is it Arnold? Anyway, you'll know.
I'll know.
We'll let you know when you get there. But, you know, Ernie has been sick and he hasn't been able to, to be there. And he's out for a good six weeks. So it's been a little challenging this year, but we managed to get it done. So we'll be opening Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Oh, we wish Ernie good health.
Good health for Ernie, exactly.
He's, is he going to be there Friday night, we hope?
Hopefully he'll be there Thursday night. Yep. I'll see if I can get him in.
Councilor Lippman?
So just two things. We had an excellent parade yesterday celebrating Christmas and the holiday season. And I also would like to point out that the tree that is the city's tree lit for the holiday for Christmas was donated by one of our councillors sitting here at the table here. It's almost a two-ton tree that is in the Veteran's Square area. And that was none other than Councilor Hamel, who provided a beautiful tree for the city to use this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
The birds will miss it, but I won't.
Cut it down yourself?
No, I did not cut it down myself. It was extracted, there's a process to get it out of there. So, but it's, it's set up.
It's a beautiful tree. Beautiful blue spruce.
Anyone else? Councilor Cheney, your, your absence of remarks here is noted.
Frightening.
Okay. I'll put you on the spot. All right. One other thing, we don't need a non-public tonight, do we, Mr. Myers? The city manager was, under future agenda items, item 23, the city manager was suggesting that items A and K could be removed from that long list. So take a quick look at those and see if any of you object to doing that.
A dealt with the Union Ave and Elm Street at Lakeport Square. We just agreed to design for future use, but not do any construction across the intersection. So I know we've had a few people show up thinking it's on the agenda and whatever, but staff will, has already taken that direction. We're not doing any construction to change lanes or do any changing with the parking. So I think if we take it off, it might avoid some confusion.
And then the temporary use permit has been granted by the state on the Wild Trail.
We've received approval for that. It came back. We need to, we just sent them last week a certificate of insurance, the copy of the council vote, and a small check. And I signed two copies. So as soon as they receive it, they'll process it and we'll get a signed copy back. So that's been approved. We're just waiting our final copy back.
Anybody object to removing these two items?
No, I'd like to add a couple.
You'd like to add a couple? All right. Let's, let's take them all. You're on the roll here.
23B and C, I mean, that goes back to 2015. And in my mind, if they need to be put back on, we can do that. But I don't see any need to-
B and C?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Hamel would like to also remove the noise and licensing issue and appropriation of funds made available during the year. What the heck is that?
So if I could speak to the 23C one, that's the, where the government, that's where the authority to accept funds outside of the budget process comes into play. And right now, any, any donation we receive needs to come before you to accept, be referred to a public hearing, advertise the public hearing and do that. So the intent there was to change that to the threshold of under, you know, anything over greater than $10,000 or $5,000 or, or whatever might make sense. We do believe that's going to require an adoption of our SA 3195B as part of the city's charter to do that. So if we wanted to move forward to that, we would have to have a charter question on that a year from now. And we would want to have the discussion about whether we want to move forward on that bill. That'll take some of those administrative things off of your plate of accepting a $500 donation or a $1,000 donation. And again, by the time we advertise it and go through the process, it's, I won't say it's not worth it, but it's bordering on a lot of work for-
Why do you want to remove that one?
I haven't heard any discussion on it for a long time, so I don't know if it was relevant.
I think it's because it's a ballot question. I think it's because it has to be a ballot.
So we can do some background and maybe I can bring it to the governance committee for right after the first of the year. And we can get it into a little more detail on it and determine whether we want to move it to it.
Why don't we move that up under unfinished business and take care of it?
Maybe we just assign it tonight to the governance committee to have a committee meeting on it and we'll prepare some background on it.
Which committee?
I think governance would make sense.
Government operations.
Government operations.
Government operations. All right.
No, Councilor Hosmer was saying before the meeting, he would like some additional committee meetings, and he's part of that.
All right. So-
Thank you.
Motion being ordered to take item 23C off future agenda items and add it to the Government Operations and Ordinances Subcommittee agenda as item C4. Right?
Yes.
Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Is there a second? Councilor Lippman, seconds and any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes confirm that motion carries. All right. Motion will also be in order then to remove from future agenda items, item A, item B, and item K. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Councilor Hamel seconds it. Discussion. Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes confirm that motion carries unanimously. And unless there's any objection or any other further, further business to come before the council tonight, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned at 8:08 PM. Thank you.